Good evening, everyone. If you can hear me, if you can wave. Awesome. Such friendly waves. I love it. So I'd like to just start out by thanking so many people that are out here tonight. I'd like to thank our principals, our nominating staff members, all of our families and our friends and our special guests for celebrating our Pittsburgh pride this evening. And most importantly, I want to thank all of our recipients. Recipients are the ones getting the award because you have been going out of your way to make the lives of other people better, which is so, so important in a normal year. But this year, when so many people are having a rough time with COVID, it's an extra special recognition this year. Which is why, if you are in grades K through eight, I believe all of your parents and guardians have agreed to chocolate fountains and bounce houses and other gift cards that you might want. And then the older grades, I think your parents have agreed to buy you a car, which will be in your driveway in the very near future. So quite honestly, I just have to say you deserve all of that. Now, you're probably not going to get it, but you deserve it because you've gone out of your way to make the lives of others so special and that's amazing. For parents and family, tonight's ceremony will be broadcast on channel 1303 and will also be part of a podcast on our district website. I have to ground us back to why we're here. The Pittsburgh pride recognition is truly special. We have about 6,000 students in the Pittsburgh schools and only 27 will receive this award this year. So think about that. 6,000 students and 27 will receive it. That shows you how much people think about your efforts as a citizen and your leadership, which makes me so, so very proud of all of our recipients tonight. As far as how this process works, each building is tasked with seeking out individuals that they felt exemplified citizenship and they had to document why. Then a building level committee convenes and they select only one candidate to be recognized. And those are the candidates that are in front of us tonight. So all of you are here after going through a process for not only being a great person, but for having a lot of people come together and say, wow, this person's really quite special. And so moms, dads, grandmas, guardians, grandfathers, aunts, uncles, know how special tonight is and how high in regards we hold each one of these candidates. Beyond tonight's recognition, students will be recognized many different ways and they'll be a little bit different based on each building. It could be their names on a bulletin board or morning announcements. Students will receive their names on a plaque, which you'll receive. Each recipient will work with their principal to decide on a special privilege or a gift and that could range from a free parking pass to spirit wear, to being a class helper, to being a speaker in classes, but another leadership role. So you have a lot to look forward to. We really want to highlight your efforts. As far as our process tonight, each recipient's nomination will be read. The first three will be read by our board president. Our second three will be read by our board vice president and our last three will be read by me. And then when all nine recognitions have been read, we will clap very loudly for everyone. And all of you will receive framed certificates and write-ups. They'll be delivered to each of your school buildings and your principals will present them to you. So I want to just close by thanking all of you again. Depending on your, the people that you encounter, all the different families we have in Pittsburgh, everyone's handling this epidemic in a different way. For some, it's really, really super, super hard. For others, it's a little bit hard. But what you're doing during a once-in-a-lifetime event is using your time and your energy to make people feel better, which is a really super cool thing. And I love that. And I love all of you for being who you are. So thank you for that. And we're going to start with our board president, Mrs. Thomas.
Hi, everybody. So nice to see everyone on the screen. My first recipient tonight is Adish Ankolakar. Adish, where are you? If you could just wave your hand? Oh, hi. How are you? Adish is in grade 12. He is at Pittsburgh Mendon High School and he was nominated by Ms. Labarre, Mr. March, Mr. Domrose, and Ms. Nazarian. Adish Ankolakar is an outstanding senior at Pittsburgh Mendon because he's not only an amazing student, but he's a wonderful human being. Mr. March shared, "Adish pretty much always has a smile on his face." And I can't see your face tonight, Adish, but I take his word for it. "And he's able to get along with everybody, staff and students. Overall, he's been a model student and I will truly, be truly sad to see him leave." Mrs. Nazarian wrote, "While Adish is mature and thoughtful, he also possesses a youthful excitement that's infectious. And while I know Adish does all kinds of amazing things, his day-to-day interactions with everyone he encounters is most impressive. His kindness radiates to everyone around him like the sun. He is incredibly hardworking and high-achieving, but his approach to his work is that of true interest and enthusiasm. I can't possibly say enough about just how special he is." As Ms. Labarre shared, "I've seen Adish work with a variety of students of various ages and backgrounds and he always finds ways to relate to others. He remembers what people are interested in and asks them questions about their interests. Adish seeks to understand others and gets people connected to each other. He checks in on others, not just to see how they're doing on an assignment, but to see how they're actually doing. Outside of school, Adish teaches a variety of topics to community members, such as Sanskrit and brain science. While he has great talent, he recognizes the importance of sharing it with others. Adish always seems so grateful for his school community and I hope he realizes that his school community is so grateful to have him." In Adish's words, "In a time when things may seem discouraging, it's imperative that we do what we say, what we can to stay connected and value the people and time that we have so we can grow together as a global community." Congratulations, Adish. You are wise beyond your years and that's coming from me. On behalf of the district, we wish you well next year. Congratulations. My second recipient tonight is Kayden Booker. Kayden is grade five from Park Road Elementary and he was nominated from Mrs. Bowser. Can I have a wave? Where are you, Kayden? Do I see him? I don't think I see him. Okay, I'd like to nominate Kayden Booker for Pittsburgh pride because he's the type of person that I would like to have in my classroom every year and to have as my child's best friend. Throughout every day, Kayden demonstrates kindness, consideration, empathy, and inclusion. If a student has feelings that are hurt, he's the first to check to see if the other person needs help or to talk. When the class is working in student groups, he's one of the first to make sure that every person is included in the activities. He can be silly with a great sense of humor, but he understands when it is time to work. At recess time, if a peer is struggling with how to play a game, he will help teach that peer how to complete the task so no one's feeling left out. Kayden shows persistence in his own academics. Even when something doesn't come easily, he's been working throughout the year to participate often and prove in areas that aren't natural strengths and become a leader in areas that are his strengths. He is great at self-correcting and learning from his mistakes while staying positive along the way. When Kayden is given the time and space, he is the life of the classroom. He has a contagious laugh and can make any topic fun. He has a sense of humor that appeals to his peers as well as the adults in the room. Kayden is also an incredible team player, motivator, and supporter, which may come from being a diehard Bills fan. I truly believe that Kayden lives the PTSD mission statement, "Be our best, do our best, and make a difference in the lives of others." He makes me proud to be his teacher this year. I hope he's as proud of himself as I am of him. For all these reasons, I'd like to nominate Kayden Booker for the Pittsburgh pride award. Congratulations, Kayden. And the third recipient this evening is Salila Centron. Salila, hi. Salila is in eighth grade and she is at Cockings Road Middle School and she was nominated by the Blue Team teachers, Mrs. Sullivan, Mr. Falzoy, and Mr. Walker. We are proudly nominating Salila Centron for the Pittsburgh pride award for her exemplary model of leadership both in and out of Cockings Road Middle School. Salila is positive, friendly, energetic, and an excellent role model. New to us in sixth grade, Salila immediately fit right in and got involved. She joined the musical, chorus, she plays violin, and she hasn't slowed down at all. Salila is always willing to step up when anyone needs help. She volunteered to help her counselor out over the summer to make a video for students about how to stay positive and remain successful during remote instruction. I would love to see that video, Salila. You need to forward that to us. Salila is a natural leader in many areas of her life. She is a student council president, captain of the modified soccer team, a web leader, and she's on the principal's cabinet. Salila leads in a way that makes everyone feel included. Whether it's on the soccer field or in the classroom, Salila is truly a remarkable leader. Salila is described by her friends as a person that always puts others first. She is the type of person to shape her day to accommodate others' needs. She often checks in on multiple people to make sure their day is going well. She offers an ear and time to listen to her friends and always cheers them up. She supports her peers academically as well and if they're struggling in any of their classes. One of her friends shared this, "She is genuinely one of the kindest, most thoughtful people I know. She's always smiling and is a super determined and inspiring person. Salila is a prominent, essential figure in my life and so many others." Academically, Salila has maintained high honor roll for all of eighth grade. She has challenged herself to not only take two high school level courses, but to also take an additional high school geometry class as a credit by examination through independent study. Salila excels at academics and the arts. She's on the Science Olympiad team, is an active member of Newberry Club, and recently just competed in Solo Fest for chorus. Salila strongly exemplifies all of our core values at Cockings Road Middle School, making her very deserving of this prestigious honor. Congratulations, Salila. We're so proud of you. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our vice president, Mr. Rusty.
Thank you very much and good evening, everybody. How's everybody doing out there? Doing good? Excellent. My first recipient this evening is Michael Dean. He was nominated by the counseling office, Ms. Drake and Mr. Puma. In a year that has been anything but normal, Michael Dean has done an amazing job of bringing normalcy to our school community. Michael did this in his role of nightly news director, as well as various clubs and organizations in which he participates. He is a leader who preserved, I'm sorry, persevered under unprecedented conditions and provided news, entertainment, and a sense of connectedness for the student body and staff. He has been a member of the nightly news, our weekly video news program, for three years and has performed every role within the club. He accepted the role of news director after his junior year, a role that requires organization, decision-making, trust, and creative collaboration. He uses his wonderful sense of humor and perspective to add levity to the show, including a memorable example of how to wear and when not to wear a face mask. Michael was instrumental in getting nightly news back on the air during the pandemic shutdown. He approached the club advisor with his idea of creating a fully remote production value of the program. He pulled together the nightly news team and found ways to create meaningful content from their homes. He led the teams in the fully remote environment, recorded the segment, and collaborated with the club advisor to edit and produce the episode, which was made accessible to our entire school community. In addition to his leadership roles and efforts outside the classroom, Michael maintains a full course load of advanced classes. He maintains high grades and takes studies very seriously. No one group or category defines Michael. He has been involved in our musicals, is an avid baseball fan, is very intelligent, is an exceptional writer, and even plays in a band. I've seen the videos and he's very good. He is the type of person who we can all learn from, one who explores his interests to their full potential while maintaining a sense of practicality and reliability. We are very fortunate to call Michael a Sutherland knight. Congratulations, Michael. My next recipient this evening is Aaron Gelb. He was nominated by Mrs. Scorsone. Aaron Gelb is a fifth grade student that exemplifies good citizenship. He is an active and integral part of his learning community. Aaron has made many amazing qualities that make him a good friend, student, and citizen. Aaron sets a good example for others to follow. He is able to communicate to others in a positive way and wants to help create positive changes. Aaron often encourages others to make choices to be kind. He will offer strategies of compromise to help other peers work through tough situations. Aaron is genuine, kind, and thoughtful, always. He is kind to his peers, along with anyone he interacts with. He finds meaningful ways to connect with his peers with a variety of interests and ability levels. Aaron has used his own personal experiences of being bullied to help others find empathy. Aaron demonstrates citizenship by sharing his experiences and skills with younger students at Jefferson Road. He is beginning to help a kindergarten student use creative tasks like finger knitting to help with self-regulation in the classroom. Aaron is informed about the world around him. He is able to communicate legitimate concerns for those in need, specifically those that have been mistreated. He has a heart to help the underdog and is aware of his learning community as well as his everyday life. Aaron continues to show great strength in respecting the rights of others. If someone is being mistreated, he will stand up for the dignity of all people. He is passionate about the treating of people with dignity, fairness, and kindness. Congratulations, Aaron. My third recipient tonight is DJ Green. DJ, you out there? Give us a wave? Excellent. He's from Barker Road Middle School. He was nominated by the red team. Ms. Cutaya, Mr. Vigder, Ms. Hogan, Ms. Seiso, Ms. Metcalf, Ms. Perotti, and Ms. Rooster. DJ Green is a seventh grader on the red team at Barker Road Middle School. DJ comes to school every day with great attitude and eagerness to learn. He is quick to offer support to his teachers and peers. The warmth of DJ's heart can be felt in his everyday interaction. Upon winning Great Kid of the Week, he stated, "I'm going to give this to my grandmother for all she does for me." DJ continues to display growth, maturity, and confidence that will serve him well in his academic and personal venues. He has a natural sense of empathy and is dedicated to ensuring accountability and justice. He demonstrates his loyalty to his family, peers, and studies on a daily basis. His leadership skills, charisma, and perseverance that DJ displays on a daily basis are sure to make him a strong leader for our community and the world around him. Ms. Hogan shared that DJ supports his peers and is always willing to lend a helping hand. He shows up with that infectious DJ smile and his hearty laugh that you cannot help but join him. He is the kind of student that you hope every teacher is blessed to have in their classroom. Ms. Metcalf shared, "I have had the pleasure of working with DJ over the last two years. Any task, no matter how challenging it might be at first, he will not give up. I'm amazed at just how far he has come here at Barker Road. I am so very proud of him." In a year filled with so much challenge, DJ has become a reminder to all of us that there is still so much good in this world. If you've met DJ, even just briefly, you already know this. His willingness to always keep trying, his courage to speak up when he needs to, and his ability to make everyone around him smile has truly been a source of light for all who are lucky enough to know him. Congratulations, DJ. Welcome back up, Mr. Superintendent Pearl.
Amazing. You're all amazing. Michael Dean, can you raise, can you just give me a wave if you can hear me? I have to say, everything I've heard about everyone has been amazing, but I would also share that if we had Pittsburgh pride for parents, your mom would also get one too. So I think that the family really is amazing. So I'm sorry, Mary. I'm sorry for throwing that out there, but you have a great, great family and I'm so happy that you were recognized tonight. So my first one that I have the privilege to recognize is Ari Rivero. And he is a third grader from Mendon Center and he was nominated by Mrs. Carpen. Ari, can you give me a wave? Oh, I love that wave. That's awesome. And I love Mrs. Carpen's smile too. She's been smiling the whole night. Here we go. "It is my distinct pleasure to recommend Ari for the Pittsburgh pride citizenship award. Ari is new to Mendon Center this year and even though we are in the midst of a very unique and challenging school year, he has remained a consistent model of kindness, resilience, and enthusiasm for learning. He is a guiding light for all of us. Ari's family moved here from Webster. However, they are originally from Spain and have only been in the United States for a short time. Since the first day of school, he has been nothing short of an exemplary classmate and a shining example of the values we encourage in our community. For example, Ari came to school not knowing a single person. He arrived with a warm hello and immediately began building relationships with his classmates. Even though Ari was still learning English, it was easy to understand how much he cared through his smile alone. To this day, Ari is often the first to greet people who enter our room to offer help or to invite a classmate to play with him. During group work, he enthusiastically partners with everyone. Whether they are his good friends or classmates, he doesn't know very well. As a result of his optimism and spirit, Ari's groups are the ones that stay on task while also having a ball. His genuine interest and respect for others make him a positive leader in our classroom. Ari goes through each day exercising a growth mindset. Although he learns quickly, reading and conversations are often challenging for him because of the abundance of new vocabulary he is learning. Many third graders in this situation would exercise caution, feeling nervous about making a mistake or letting others know they were not sure what was being said, but not Ari. He doesn't hesitate to ask for clarification for words and ideas and if the explanation is still unclear to him, he carefully rephrases his question or restates the answer in his own words to make sure he understands correctly. Ari demonstrates unbridled enthusiasm that breathes life into our entire classroom. For instance, Ari gets very excited when he has something to share or when something that was confusing becomes clear to him. We all share in his pride in those moments. In summary, Ari's positivity and kindness make him a role model for students and adults. He definitely makes Pittsburgh proud. Congratulations, Ari." So Ari, you get to choose from a chocolate fountain or a bounce house. So you can talk that over with your mom tonight. Look at Angela. Okay, my next is Jack Rutledge. Hey, Jack. Give me a thumbs up if you're doing well tonight. Okay. Jack is a fifth grader at Thornell Road and he was nominated by Mrs. Chapman. Hi, Mrs. Chapman. And Mr. De Bell's here to root you on too. This must be really good, Jack. I'm excited to read this. Amelia Earhart once said, "A single act of kindness throws out roots in all directions and the roots spring up and make new trees." Jack is a young man who always seeks out opportunities to learn and grow. By just being himself, Jack's words and actions have planted saplings of kindness that continue to grow each day. Early on in the school year, while we were all getting to know each other, Jack saw a classmate quietly drawing a dragon. Jack could easily have seen the drawing and returned to his desk without saying a word to the other student, but he didn't. Jack stopped and said something to the effect of, "Wow, I really like your dragon. It's cool." This small acknowledgement led to other classmates taking notice and many conversations about drawing grew out within the classroom. Most importantly, the young artist had a smile on his face that extended well beyond his mask as the boy realized that he was in a class that respected and celebrated everyone's interests. Another small Jack act came during our morning meeting when we were playing 11. Students go around the circle and giving one to three numbers, the person who has to say 11 is out. There is the ability to sacrifice yourself by saying 11. It is through this game that I learned of Jack's competitive nature and saw more of his kind heart. The first person to sacrifice himself was Jack and the person he saved was me. I was amazed. After that, in almost every game, someone sacrificed their spot in the game so someone else could keep playing. Perhaps the most impactful act of kindness was when Jack asked a simple question in February. "Can we play kickball as a whole class?" This small ask led to a chain reaction in our class relationships and self-confidence has grown, sportsmanship had developed, and everyone had become much better at kickball. Jack's love of sport has encouraged others to try new things, including the adults in our school as we plan to hold our first Thornell Road fifth grade kickball tournament this June. And I hope I'm invited. Or I can officiate. Often, we think of big acts having the biggest impact. Jack is proof that a small, simple, heartfelt act can help to grow deeply rooted trees of friendship, compassion, and community that last well beyond a single moment. I'd like to congratulate Jack for all he does. Congratulations, Jack. Smile, Jack. That was awesome. And our last recipient is Zoya Shaikh from Allen Creek Elementary School, grade two. And nominating members were our Amy Pelletier and Catherine Rudd. And I think all of them, Mr. Beyond is here. Everyone's here cheering you on. Is Zoya there? Hi, Zoya. Okay, are you ready, Zoya? Here we go. "Zoya is a second grader at Allen Creek Elementary. She truly embodies the Allen Creek motto of being our best selves and doing our best work on a daily basis. She is polite and respectful to both peers and adults. When passing in the hallway, Zoya always says hello and gives a little wave. Zoya is one of the most hard-working students that I've ever, ever had. She is always giving 100% and persevering no matter what the task is. Zoya consistently comes to school happy and is eager to learn. She arrives in class and gets right to doing her best work. Her consistent effort in her academics is something she should be so proud of. She is a wonderful role model for her classmates and is always helping, encouraging, and accepting of others. Zoya truly shines..." Zoya truly shines with her peers. She has a quiet yet thoughtful kindness that shows through her daily activities. Her kindness towards others is part of what makes her special. Instinctively, Zoya seems to know what her classmates might need, such as showing a new student where something is, helping those around her find lost items, or just paying them a compliment. Zoya is the bright light that you want in your class. She is kind, thoughtful, considerate, empathetic, and accepting. Zoya is a truly special and a joy to work with and is very deserving of the Pittsburgh Pride. Congratulations, Zoya. So tonight, we had the privilege, the Board of Education and myself and all the people that are on camera, to really honor some beautiful people, some really gifted people from the sense of a humanity perspective. And I believe that not everyone can be a great athlete, and not everyone can be a great musician, and not everyone can be great at academics, but people can be great people if they make that choice. And sometimes that's harder than any of those other ones. To make that decision in your mind, to decide every day when you wake up in the morning, to make Pittsburgh a better place, to make your classroom a better place, to help students, your peers, that are maybe having a rough day, what you've all done in your own way is made the lives of other people better. And that's a gift. And we celebrate you for that. And I really do wish I could give you chocolate fountains and kares. But what I also know is that for each of you, you're doing it for the right reasons. You're not doing it for a recognition. You're doing it because that's who you are in your core and who you are at your heart. So I would ask that you continue being who you are, continue making a difference, and know that on behalf of the superintendent, your teachers, your administrators, and all of the other people that you encounter, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for all you do and for the differences that you make. So if we could, give all of our recipients a large round of applause. So I wish we were in person. If we were, we would be taking your pictures behind the Board of Education and having some personal interaction. So hopefully, this is the last time we're going to be doing a Pittsburgh Pride recognition through Zoom, and we'll be able to re-zoom in person for our next one. But for now, just know how important you are, how much we appreciate you, and we thank you for all you do. At this point, we're going to take a brief recess for about 10 minutes, and we're going to start a regular board meeting up at seven o'clock. So I'm going to say goodbye and say thank you for being amazing people, amazing families, and we'll hopefully see you around campus soon. Have a great night, everyone.
Good evening and welcome to the Pittsburgh Central School District Board of Education Meeting. If you'd please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have an approval of the agenda, please? Thanks, Pete. Ted, any edits? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Public Budget Hearing. Starting, Mike.
Good evening. I'd like to just start by thanking our business office and thanking especially Darren and Leanne for all of their work on our budget this year. The purpose for tonight is to provide the community with a summary of the 2021-2022 adopted proposed budget in a format that's required by law, supplemented with a clear and concise summary of our final budget. The budget shall afford the community current levels of programs and services for the projected enrollment that were maintained at pre-pandemic levels. Costs were adjusted for factors such as collective bargaining agreements, inflation, and historical trends. This also implements our best understanding of projections of associated revenues and supports. The property tax increase, including the debt exclusion of 1.95%, will not be exceeded. The budget and related programs and services appropriations are balanced with our estimated revenues. This process in creating our budget guidelines started, I believe, in January of this year. And again, the district planning team agreed that first and foremost, the budget needs to reflect a student-centered budget that will include equity and inclusion for all students, social, emotional supports, and mental health supports, also safe school environments and safe facilities. On Superintendent's Conference Day, we actually went through a formal drill with out students there in preparation for next year as it relates to active shooter preparedness, bringing us back to the pre-pandemic mindset of having students fully back in school and a reality of pre-pandemic life of the things that we had to worry about. So we tested a lot of the technology that we've put into schools and our level of responsiveness relative to the safety of our schools. We also are focused on high-quality professional development for all staff around the topics of equity and inclusion. I'm also understanding the tiered supports that are going to be needed from students without being in school fully this year. In addition, one of the things that our staff have grown to use very productively is technology and how to best leverage different technology platforms and softwares and applications. We also have to balance the investment in education with sensitivity to limited community resources by not exceeding the tax cap and by opening schools fully without temporary learning models if permitted by New York State Department of Health. So as we look into our budget, what we've done this year is we've pulled out all of the additional staffing for remote learning and taken that out of the budget, and we're able to create a budget based on a typical school year. So our planning and our thinking and our budget reflects a school year that is pre- Maintaining fiscal stability now and into the future through reserve accounts that are sustainable, partnerships and shared services, and certainly our audits. We are audited probably more than most districts, and we welcome that. Many of our audits are voluntary so that we can continue to make sure we're using our money and the community's money in the best way possible. And also protecting and maintaining our highest bond rating in our school district. And finally, obviously, to meet legal mandates. We have a lot to be proud of in our school district. Our graduation rate is close to 98%. Our college-bound students are around 94%. We have several national merit scholarships, finalists, and commended. We have many AP scholars. We have national and state recognition for excellence in our high schools through U.S. News and World Reports. Our middle schools being named New York State Schools Essential Elements Schools to Watch, which is the highest recognition you can get. Being named the Best Community for Music Education, I think four years in a row now. Students at all grade levels participating in community service, service learning programs, many individual and sectional and state championships, numerous enrichment opportunities, a crazy, wonderful arts program, and also a district that prides itself on fiscal responsibility. And quoting Moody Investor Services, saying the district is financially healthy due to prudent conservative financial management. We're going to walk you through some of the specific numbers as it relates to the three-part budget, which we're required by law to do during the hearing. And it's my pleasure to turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent of Business, Darren Kenny. Thanks, Darren.
Good evening. I'm going to be going through many slides, probably five or six. I'm going to cover very, very quickly because this is designed for the website for those who may not have heard the presentation. But looking back to basically one year ago, real quick synopsis, we were presenting a budget during a time that we were delayed with our budget. The state didn't have a budget or state aid runs. We didn't know for sure when we were going to be voting on a budget. It was put together, the actual budget vote quickly, 100% absentee ballots. We presented a budget that was 0.11% increase or basically flat. We kept the promise that the initial cost of full-day kindergarten would be removed from the budget. And really, something important to keep in mind when you keep hearing about the foundation aid increases for this year, we had a $1.4 million decrease in state aid last year, so we had some making up to do. Fast forward to today, much different time from a financial standpoint. Wish it was different from a pandemic standpoint. As Mike has already said, we built this budget with the premise that we will be back to school full-time as we were pre-pandemic. However, we need to leave some flexibilities, as we've experienced in the last two budgets, for what may come down the pipe. So we were presenting a budget that's 2.56% over the current year's budget. We have a state aid increase of $2.1 million. The legislature took a big swing at that, and we'll see that in a little while. And the tax levy is at the tax cap of 1.95%. And that's a pretty complicated formula that calculates that out. So again, we're trying to keep the best flexibility that we can. Moving on to the actual budget itself, this is a way that many people like to look at the budget, and it breaks it down what we call object of expense in the uniform system of accounts for New York State. So salaries and benefits make up about 77% of our total budget. You can see that in the pie chart down below. It's also about a 57% driver in the increase. So we were definitely a people business. And you can see how it goes through the other areas: equipment, contractual, tuitions. Tuitions would be everything from what we pay for students to attend state schools, for example, or if we have to pay for the costs that the health and welfare services that other school districts provide to our non-public students going to non-public schools in that district. In turn, we also bill them for the ones that are in our district. BOCs and debt service and inter-fund transfers. So all the way back in 1998, the legislature and Governor Pataki at the time invented what they called the three-part budget, and the intent was for all school districts to take the uniform system of accounts and try to present the budget in a very similar format to all people in all districts. So that's what we're trying to do here. So the three-part budget has three main ingredients or components: the administrative component, program, and capital. Administrative, just think of that as basically oversight in anything that's not directly involving students. So the main office, for example, in the buildings, district office, et cetera. Program is exactly that. If it's direct services to students, it's in the program section. And then capital is for the operations and maintenance and the maintenance of the facilities, utilities, et cetera, debt payments. So looking at this chart, by far, 75%, almost 76% of our budget is spent on the program component. That's a higher percentage than many school districts throughout the state. Conversely, looking at the capital component, and that's decreasing over time, as far as the part of our budget that is driven by that, that's predominantly our debt service and our operations and maintenance expenses, and our administrative is under 10%, and that's far below most school districts throughout the state. So diving into it a little further, you can see from a dollars and cents standpoint for each one of the main three components, administrative is fairly flat over time, program is where the money is, and 94% of our increase, our total budget increase, was for direct programs to students. And the capital portion is actually declining slightly. So drilling down with the first component, administrative, you can see the main drivers in there, and some of the, what they call functions of expense, are in all three of these components. For example, employee benefits. But you can see the main points there, and encompasses the regular offices, Special Education Office, Instruction Office. A portion of that is directly to the program side. Support services, with the exception of operations and maintenance and transportation, they're in another component, you'll see that in a minute. Superintendent's Office, Board of Education, and all the employee benefits related to those areas as well as per law. The retiree benefits, such as health insurance, must be coded to the administrative section. So you see some changes there in the last three years on the far right for employee benefits. That's a combination of things. A few years ago, the retirement system rates were extremely low, and they started to come up pretty quickly. That's big driver to that, as well as we've had more than usual retirements in the last couple of years. Moving on to the program component, again, this is anything that directly affects the students. Due to some retiree attrition and things of that nature, the regular school is fairly flattered, doesn't have a substantial increase, only about 1%. Special education services directly to students, curriculum and instruction, support services, and the employee benefits. You see the trends there. Excuse me. The capital component, operations and maintenance, about a 1.6% increase over the current year. Right now, utilities continue to be a bit volatile, trying to project where they're going to be. Our debt service is declining, but keep in mind, building aid is also declining along with that. So we're doing the best we can to keep those schedules aligned to each other so that the net effect to the tax levy is flat. And employee benefits. The next thing that the state required is they developed what they called the Fiscal Accountability Supplement. It's a long report, and we are to cover this part of the report where it takes certain costs. It backs out debt service, operations and maintenance, and transportation. Part of the reason they do that is because not all school districts have a transportation department, or they have a very small transportation department. So they're trying to level the playing field, and they do it on a cost-per-student basis. Unfortunately, the data they use is a few years old. This information is provided by the state. We do not calculate it. I've included the enrollment information for our district there. But when you look at it, it breaks it down between general education, special education, and total of all students. I know it's natural to want to add both of those together and think that should be total, but the reason why it's not is because some special needs students are also in the regular ed program, so it's not as simple as one or the other. So when you compare us to a similar district, when you look at total for all students, we're 21% below a similar district. And when you compare it to all of New York State, we're 12% below on a per pupil spending to New York State. This is kind of a unique year in the sense that, to a certain degree, our budget development, I look at it as two separate buckets. And on the left side of this column, or in the blue, is our normal budget, our process where we talk about the general fund. We talk about it's a one-year, it's what the voters are voting on, and the purposes for our spending plan for the year for the general operations of the district. New this year is all the federal stimulus money, and that's like a separate part off to the side because it cannot supplant the general fund expenditures. It has to be in addition to. It's supposed to be treated as a grant, so it's accounted for in the special aid fund, and it's for multi-years, three years. And based on which parts of the grant, it can go on for different time periods. We will be developing plans that have to be reported to the state as well as on the website. The state's promising they're going to give us more information on what to do with this, and you'll be seeing more about this in the coming weeks. But for now, we're going to concentrate on the left side, what the voters are actually voting on next week. So shifting gears to how we pay for the spending plan, here's a summary of the revenue. The tax levy is 1.95%, just under $2.1 million increase. Our state aid, when you put them all together, all the various categories, is a little over 2.1 or 9%. Sales tax is still continuing to be healthy. We did not decrease our budget for sales tax for the current year as much as a lot of districts around us did, but we feel we can increase that sum based on- of districts around us did, but we feel we can increase that sum based on our current trend. Interest earnings are, I joke, we lose money looking at the bank statement, it's so little. Fund balance, we are bringing the use of fund balance and reserves down to the level where we were two years ago, so that we can have those for future financial stability. One thing that the state and federal legislatures are warning about is with the stimulus money, don't use that to get yourself into a fiscal cliff. So talking about foundation aid, wouldn't be a budget hearing, you know, for 16 years we've talked about foundation aid, but there is some good news about foundation aid. The legislature really wanted to address a formula that's been broken for 16 years, and every year it's become more and more broken because it was not addressed. In our instance, we were one of the districts that was the most underfunded in the state. At about 54%, we were receiving what we should be getting on an annual basis, so the state said everybody needs to be at least 60%. There are some districts right here in Monroe County, they're closer to 120%. The chart on the top right just shows on an annual basis, the purple bars is what we should be receiving per law for foundation aid. The blue is what we actually received, and the yellow below the line is what is underfunded. So we are basically underfunded on an annual basis, to a point lower than we were in 2008, '09, and right now, we're owed about $97 million. This next chart is the cumulative effect. So the yellow bars is the cumulative of what the formula says we should have received in foundation aid, and actually probably should be even a little bit higher than that because of going to full-day K a couple of years ago. But about $200 million over the 16 years, the district should have received in foundation aid and received 103 million. So we're 97 underfunded, and we're at 54% when you look at it from a cumulative aspect. So that's important to keep in mind. When the state says 60%, they mean for this year. But this is very similar to your mortgage. If you're not making payments on your mortgage, and you finally make a mortgage payment, you're not caught up. Contingent budget is something that we have to look at if the voters do not support the budget, and the Board of Education has a few options when that happens. The Board can present another budget, and it could be the exact same budget, it could be a lower budget, it could be a higher budget. They could go straight to contingent budget. If the voters do not approve the second budget, the Board has to go to contingent budget. So what is contingent budget? Back several years ago, contingent budget was capped on a maximum amount that it could increase. The actual budget is not capped at all under contingent budget. What's capped is the tax levy. The tax levy has to stay the same as it was the last time it was approved, so in our case, for the current year. And then the Board of Education and the administration has to do what they need to do to stay within that. So if that were to happen, we would be losing about $2.1 million in revenue to support the budget, and we would have a lot of decisions to make to stay within that spending plan. So as we wind up the actual spending plan for the budget, just some key factors, we are asking the voters to consider a budget that is a 2.56% increase or just under $3.6 million. What they're approving is a $143,925,548 spending plan. The district cannot spend one penny more than that. We try very hard, and we always spend less than that. From the tax levy standpoint, I talked about the tax cap formula, so to kind of give you a breakdown, in green, 1.95%, that's the cap, that is the tax levy increase that supports this budget. When you back out the debt piece, because the voters have already voted on that, when they did the capital project, that represents .35. So really, 1.60% increase in taxes supports this budget increase. And as previously said, a contingent budget would result in a zero tax change and require $2.1 million worth of reduced revenue. So these are the legalese that will be on the ballot, like I just said, asking to approve or authorize the Board of Education to spend up to that $143 million amount. There also will be some additional propositions on the budget, or on the vote, four of them. I've tried to summarize them here rather than go through all the various legal aspects. Unusual to the district is Proposition 1, which is for the purchase of buses. We are requesting to replace 12 buses with unleaded buses, not diesel. A few years ago, we made a concerted effort to convert over from diesel to unleaded. They're cleaner, and they seem to be less maintenance issues. So $1.388 million, we're asking to withdraw from the Capital Reserve, which is basically a savings account that the state says that we can set aside funds. The voters authorized the establishment of that reserve and the funding of it. We're asking the voters if we can pull that money out to buy the buses. They should generate $930,000 in state aid, and we put that money back into the reserve to help keep it be there for our use in the future. Proposition 2 is asking to take money from the facilities capital reserve, $6 million for a small project that focuses on preservation of facilities, efficiency, and health and safety items. So these are things like emergency generators, windows that are leaking so bad it's causing damage to the building, roofs, things of that nature. The next proposition is the Capital Reserve is end-of-life, both in terms of, we've put into the reserve the maximum amount of money that the voters authorized, as well as it's at its 10-year maximum end-of-life. So we're asking to establish a brand-new reserve, and up to a maximum of $42 million over the next 10 years can be deposited in that reserve. We would be taking the $17 million that are in the current reserve and moving that into the new reserve and closing the old one. And lastly, Proposition 4, we have a technology reserve, asking to pull $875,000, no more than, from that reserve to buy instructional technology to support one-to-one initiative. That also will generate state aid and is eligible for other forms of aid as well. We will be taking that money to put that back into the reserve. So I'm going to go quickly through these because this is the legal ballot language, but it says the same thing that I just said.
With that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Pearl.
Thanks, Darren. So this proposed budget was developed with the expectation that we will open fully next year, pre-COVID operation. It is understood that COVID will have ramifications on the future of school operations, and therefore flexibility within the budget and functions are tantamount to success. There are some nuances that we're still unsure of. If SCD will require some level of remote learning for students that may be immunocompromised or what that may look like, we're not sure. So we may need to spend some funding for some portion of our students for remote learning. The budget is balanced, it remains within a property tax, it preserves all programs and services. It's not bad news at all, what the state and the legislator did relative to aid. I know as we went through this process, and you saw the slides, we've had many years where we're not getting state aid. This is a year where we've been recognized as being at such a low level, that they raised us this year from 54% to 60%. And when I think about where we were in January, we were talking about several million dollars in cuts, so the state aid part is actually a good news item. Our year-to-year increase in spending is 2.56%. The property tax levy increases 1.95% within the tax cap, and contains the budget and tax levy growth below the county average, despite having the lowest foundation aid per pupil and percent full-funded in the Western New York area. So we present to you the budget again during this hearing, some future dates, or one future date. May 18th is our budget vote. It will take place in person. To obtain an absentee ballot, which is still an option for folks, an application must be submitted. Applications may be obtained by contacting our district clerk, Deb Carpenter, and you can see the contact information. All absentee ballots must be received in the clerk's office by 5:00 PM on the 18th. Eligible voters must meet the following legal requirements: you must be at least 18, a citizen of the United States, and a legal resident of the district at least 30 days immediately prior to May 18th. If you have any questions, please access our district website, or feel free to call our board clerk, or if you have budget questions, to contact Darren's office. So with that, I'd like to open it up to any questions or comments.
Sure. Do you want to come up here, Darren? Go ahead, Ducky.
Your Proposition 3 for the Capital Reserve, when I reviewed the financial statements from this September, excuse me, it stated we have just under $24 million in Capital Reserve, and in your proposition, you just mentioned that you're going to transfer $17 million. Can you reconcile that?
All of the propositions, all the things I talked about are considered a capital reserve, and we segregate them out between bus purchase and the technology reserve, so that all that together adds up to 24.
24, right. So like you said, you just said that you're going to trans, if this is approved, or this expires, and the remaining deposit, $17 million, is just going to go be transferred into the new?
For the facilities capital reserve.
Yes, for just for the facilities.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, everyone. Thanks, Darren.
Thanks, Darren. And thank you, Mike. May I have an approval of the minutes from April 19th, please? Thanks, Robyn and Renee. Any edits there? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Board of Education reports, a lot of our professional development, as you know, has been winding down this time of year. We do have an information exchange committee meeting that is yet to be determined. We don't have a date for that yet. Once I have that, I will forward that along to you. But we did have a great legislative committee meeting that I'd like Val to report out on. Val is the committee co-chair for Monroe County School Boards and has a report for us tonight.
Sure. So in the next few weeks, we're going to be meeting with our representatives for Senator Schumer and Senator Gillibrand, and also meeting directly with Congressman Rely. And our group usually comes together, and we come to a consensus on what our top priorities are for advocacy. And certainly, this year is going to be talking about that, we're going to talk to them about the CDC metrics for reopening. We feel that their zone guidelines are not attainable, and while we know that New York State doesn't follow the CDC guidelines exactly, they're still using the zone guidelines just for reopening. So we're going to be talking to them about that. And we have some other things that we continue to talk about them with IDEA reauthorizations coming up, some charter schools accountability, CDL licensing for school bus drivers. We're hoping they'll work with the U.S. Department of Transportation as well. And just to get a little bit further into the woods, we're also going to be meeting with, we're hoping to meet with our Regents Wade Norwood and our new one Ruth Turner, probably on June 9th. That is not 100% confirmed yet, but we're working on doing that. And this is where our topic of reopening schools is going to be really big. That is absolutely our top priority for this, and we definitely have a sense of urgency for them to give us very clear language that schools can reopen five days a week at minimum, starting in September. We're going to be looking for some kind of clear guidance regarding the decision-making chain in the future, what will happen if we reach certain metrics for temporary or fully closing. And we also, again, are looking for some more realistic metrics to use for that as well. And we definitely want, again, very, very clear language from the governor, from New York State Department of Health, and we also want the state ed to come up with a statement to say that we want all students back in school five days a week. Let's see, what else do we have here? We're also asking all of our districts to bring data to support why we're looking for this, so we're going to talk about data based on in-school testing, data for our number of teachers and probably students, certainly by next fall, and even by now, who are fully vaccinated, data regarding what happened with our sport opportunities regarding spread. So we're looking for all districts to provide that support when we talk to the Regents especially, but certainly the federal legislators as well. The other thing we want to talk about, which you know will be sort of a priority for us as well, will be remote learning in the future. We're looking for a clear metric to determine who will be eligible to have a remote program. As Mike mentioned earlier, we don't know what's going to happen, but we're looking for that information ASAP. There's definitely a sense of urgency regarding the remote for next year, and we're going to be asking our Regents how they see remote in the future as well. I'm trying to think if there's anything else. The rest of it are things that we've been talking about for years, our teacher certification, our staffing shortages, and things like that. To be honest with you, I feel like most of those conversations are going to be around opening schools. We have a lot of school districts who will be attending these meetings with all of these legislators and also our Regents. So we know there's a lot of data, there's a lot of information, there's a lot of people out there who will have a statement to make. So I feel like both of these, or not both, but these two group meetings will be fully around opening schools.
And Val, just to confirm, both you and Robyn will be attending the upcoming meetings, correct? Okay. Just let me know if that changes, and I can definitely step in. Okay. Thank you so much. Dates to remember, we have a few dates here. We have the 13th Board Tour of Mendon Center Elementary at 7:15. The 18th is our budget vote, as we heard tonight, and school board election. That's from 7:00 AM until 9:00 PM in the Barker Road Middle School gym. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is the 24th of May. And the 26th, we do have Monroe County School Board Association Annual Meeting, and if you haven't signed up for that, if you could please let Deb know if you plan to attend. And with that, we need an approval of annual vote and poll workers, please. Thanks, Val. Renee? Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. I just want to remind everyone in the audience, if you don't have a mask, if you could please, we have to abide by the protocol, and you do need a mask while you're in the audience. Financial report, Darren.
Let me make a motion to suspend the meeting until everyone complies with masks.
Okay. I have a motion to suspend the meeting for 10 minutes until everyone complies with the masks. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. I'd like to call the meeting back in order, please. May I have a motion? Thanks, Irene. And Renee? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Financial report, Darren.
Long time no see. Treasury report for March, we received what's called the Spring Aid Advance, almost $6 million worth of state aid for the various forms of aid, as well as BOCs aid, $779,000, which is about $55,000 less than this time last year. School Lunch Fund, the comparison is a little interesting to look at because one year ago is when we first closed for the pandemic, as well as the resolution that you approved to transfer $447,000 into the fund. That is being reflected in there as well. That pretty much covers the highlights for the Treasury report.
May I have a motion, please? Thanks, Irene. And Robyn? Questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Next is the Third Quarter Extra Classroom Activities Report. Compared to previous years, obviously, there's a lot less activity there because some clubs are not running, or not running to full capacity, but based on what we do have, I did not see anything that raised a level of concern.
May I have a motion to approve, please? Thanks, Val and Pete. Questions about that? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Darren. Sean, Human Resources Report, please.
Good evening.
Good evening. First, we have the Professional Staff Report for your consideration. We have a number of items here. We have our first reading for tenure. We have nineteen total recommendations. That encompasses seventeen teachers and two administrators. We have a substitute request for Assistant Director of Financing from May through October. We have three teacher appointments. We have our Director of Transportation appointment for Carla Grove. A correction of salary for a certificated staff member, and that's for a graduate degree that was not originally factored in at the time of hiring. There's a part-time to probationary change of status. And then we have two resignations, one for a paraprofessional and a resignation for retirement for one of our senior network technicians, which will be effective in December. And he's been with us since two thousand eight.
Okay. Thanks, Sean. May I have a motion, please? Thanks, Ted. And Renee, questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Second for your consideration is our Support Staff Report. We have a school aid appointment and then two resignations, one for a driver and one for a cleaner.
May I have a motion? Irene? Val? Questions? Sorry, Pete. I don't mean to leave you out. Questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Special Education Report, Elizabeth. Thank you. Superintendent's Report, Mike.
There is a need this evening for an executive session for the employment of a particular person.
May I have a motion? Pete? Ted? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
There are several policy deletions that are on the consent agenda. Most of those deletions are because they're subsumed in other areas or they're out of date. There's also a first reading of Policy Seventy-five Fifty, Dignity Act for All Students. That policy, Deb, if we could post that after the first reading for the community to view as well, that'd be helpful. So a couple of other things. Want to thank our paraprofessionals, especially, actually, all of our paraprofessionals. One of the things, we had a pause this evening because of concern around not reopening schools fully, which I 100% understand. But we have had our K-5 open from September, and not many schools across the state have, have done that since September. And the reason we were able to do that was because our Board of Education and our large group of teachers and parents, they, they came together over the summer, I think there was about seventy of us or more, really thought creatively in our resources and how to do that. And we looked at space and we looked at personnel, and we were able to be really creative and, and create what's called pods, which means we split a class in half. This isn't 100% across the board, but in general, we split a class in half. So instead of twenty students or twenty, let's say twenty-four students in a classroom, we would have twelve in one classroom, twelve in the other classroom. And we would have a teacher and we would have, on many occasions, a paraprofessional. So those two adults would be in charge of those twenty-four students, which allowed us to come in six feet apart and be open five, five days. The paraprofessionals in this instance were amazing. We had to pull from the middle school, the high school. We took everyone that we could and, and put them at the K-5 level for a lot of reasons. One was because we know of the hardship on families to have to look at childcare if they, they weren't home. We also recognize the challenge with technology at such a young grade level. So this allowed families to, to continue with their typical lives and allowed our youngest learners to be in school. And there was not one concern that was brought to our attention from our paraprofessionals. And they're the kind of unsung heroes here that allowed this to, to happen. Our paraprofessionals utilize those couple hours on Wednesdays to meet with our teachers so that they can plan for the rest of the week. And they also meet after school to, on, on regular days to do the same. So I just want to give a, a huge thank you and acknowledgement to our paraprofessionals for all they do. And I also want to thank our parents. It's, it's been a really tough year on so many levels. And we've reached out to parents and asked for their support and driving to the extent they can. And I know that that's a hardship, and they've done it, and, and it's, it's what's making our model work. So we've been K-5 since September, not because of any one thing, but because of our collective community coming together and, and working together. So, so our paraprofessionals, thank you. To our parents, thank you. And I think we're all ready to get this year done and just start out normal next year. I also want to thank our nurses. Tuesday is officially Nurse Appreciation Day. Our nurses have done more than any one from the outside looking in could imagine. They, they have taken their jobs to the next level. So again, this isn't an area where nothing's been taking off their plate. But in addition to their normal job as nurses, they've been contact tracers, they've had to interpret guidance. They've tested thousands of our students and staff. They daily report different, they have different reporting procedures that they're in charge of every day. They're working with families, physicians every day, clearance for sports, clearance to come back from COVID. They're, they're doing a lot of that gray area where they're, they're making a lot of professional decisions and having to reach out to others for clarification. Every morning, we do the questionnaire. I know everyone's sick of that questionnaire. I'm sick of the questionnaire. I'm sick of answering those questions. I'm sick of hitting next, and we're all sick of it. I, I, I get it. But they've been doing it. They've been responsible for it, and they've done an amazing job with it. So a special thank you to our, our nursing staff. I also want to highlight a student, Chris Shen. It is Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, and he actually created this poster with his sister, and I just attached his email to me. It's quite remarkable, the drawing, and it's, it's about the size of the doorway. It's, it's huge. And it's currently being housed at Sutherland High School. And I know that not only does it mean a lot to him and his family to be able to acknowledge Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, but to our Asian community. So, Chris, great job. We, we appreciate that. Lindsay, thank you. Great job. And we're excited and proud to, to display this at Sutherland. So we've, this is our second in-person board meeting with spectators. We're really trying our hardest to find what works for everyone. And so we've gone from Zoom. We went from Zoom with chat on. We've gone from Zoom with chat off. We've gone to YouTube. We've gone from just everyone here. So now we're at the point where last week, we had public comment in person, presenters in person, spectators in person. And we've evolved again. So we've added another layer that if you want to speak at public comment and you can't be here, you can email the Board Clerk, Deb Carpenter, up until today to email questions, and, and that could be your public comment from remote. So we're trying to accommodate everyone. We're trying to find that right spot so that people can feel heard. So know that we'll continue to evolve. We'll continue to assess. But our biggest message to the community is we want your voices to be heard. So I want to go back and take us back to the, the whole reopening concept. So starting in, in the summer, in July, the Board of Education and myself all pledge to sign on to follow the Constitution of New York State. And we had to do an attestation to follow our reopening guidelines and submit that to the state. And there, there's a lot of confusion right now about who has what authority, who has what rights, who controls what. And, and you can see it not only in schools, but you can also see it in restaurants. You can see it in festivals. So I think about like all the different festivals in Rochester. Some are opening. Some have decided to close because they can't get approval. Some are operating at half-capacity. Now we're seeing restaurants and rules changing a little bit. We're seeing the entertainment industry and the sporting events change a little bit, actually quite a bit. So we're in that kind of transitional time, I think, right now, which is, which is a good thing. But it's a transition, and transitions are, are, are difficult. I think the good news in all of this is that the decisions seem to be heading in a positive direction. So the decisions are, from the state level, are reopen more, reopen more, reopen more. As a Board of Education, as a district, I, I just want to be clear that we have been advocating for a, a long time around schools and reopening. We have sent a letter to our community in asking our community to also send letters to the Governor and to New York State Department of Health. We've sent letters to the Governor, the County Executive, Monroe County Department of Health. We have also, individual board members and myself have met with legislators. We've shared our data along the way, which has been very good, encouraging them to allow us to reopen in different ways. We've, we've tried the route of, can you allow us to test everyone? Can, what can we do to get kids in the door? And while we haven't been successful, it's, it's not because we have not been trying. So I just want to give you an insight into what we have to do. So this is actually from Sunday. This is yesterday. So when you look at this data, don't think that it's from this morning. This is Sunday's data. What we have to do as a school district per New York State Department of Health is to look at the zones that we're in. And whatever zone that you're in will allow you to open at different levels. And so at the top, you see two red bars, and below it, you see a yellow. And below that is an explanation that says that if the two indicators suggest different transmission levels, the higher level is selected. So right now, as we look at our case rate per a hundred thousand, we are in the red. As we look at percent positivity, we're in the yellow, which means we have to default to the red. Good, bad, or indifferent, agree or disagree, those are the rules that we have to follow. I, I, it, it's hard for me not to give a personal opinion here, but I feel that we are low enough where we could reopen safely. That's not personal. It's professional. I do feel that we can open safely. But we're in the red. And so that means that if you're in the red, that we have to cohort in order to get to three feet. So this isn't something that we've made up. This means that we could get everyone back in school at three feet, but we'd have to cohort. High school, that's impossible. So it's impossible to cohort students, knowing that students are all over the place in multiple classes, multiple grade levels. They, they commingle throughout the day. At the middle school, I, I pulled together our principals and others to see if we can maybe consider our six through eight teams as a cohort. And what we found out in running the numbers is that four of our nine periods, we have 85% of our students commingled. And then the other five periods, 16% of our students are commingled. And it's, 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 it's ironic that our strength is now our weakness during, during this time. So part of the reason you have the commingling at the middle level is because we didn't want, for several years now, the same students to be in all the same classes all the time throughout the course of the year. We wanted students on one team to be able to be with their friends on different teams throughout the day. And so as far as cohorting at our middle school, it cannot be done with any, any level of fidelity. We were hoping that we would get three-feet guidance. We had no idea, no one saw this coming, that it would be three feet with cohorting. Never heard of that before. And the reason of the cohorting is to be able to track students in the event of any kind of outbreak so that we can contact trace. So that's the rationale for cohorting. Agree with it or disagree with it. Those are the rules that we have to follow. So we've heard of other schools reopening. I pulled this, I actually took this picture, I'm sorry, it's not great, this morning from the Governor's press conference, where it shows the positivity rates across the different regions across the state. So the Finger Lakes is at 2.72, which is the region that we're in. And you can see the other rates across the state. So some schools are able to open because they're not in the red zone. If you're not in the red zone, we can, if we weren't in the red zone, we can open. So the lower those rates, the closer you are to a hundred positive cases per a hundred thousand, you can open at three feet without worrying about cohorting. We're, we're just not there. Our area is the highest across the state, albeit it's still low. And that's what's frustrating. So what, what is that, that right number isn't for us to say right now because we have to follow what the, the law says. Other districts are able to reopen because of space or because of enrollment or a combination of the two or because of where their county may stand. There's a lot of different, lot of different reasons, and I, I really can't stand here and speak to what other districts are doing or thinking or how they got there. But these are, I think, essentially the different buckets that they would fall in. For us, we can't get to three feet. Not right now. And so that's why we're at, where, where we're at, at this, at this moment. So I just want to briefly, I have a couple of slides to just talk about what, how we're engaging students outside of this. So obviously, we have K-5 in five days a week. We have our secondary students in two days a week in person. What we've done recently, or not so recently, is we've added after-school homework centers that are daily for students that need a support at the middle school. We have Wednesday support for academics and SEL for students. We've increased our extracurricular activities. We've invited our remote students in for tours, lunches with friends, counseling. We have brought in several students four days a week to support academic and SEL needs. And you, and you can see the, the list. I don't want to go down everything. But we are trying to pull in more students as we progress through this. And this is a horrible slide. This is absolutely terrible. At the high school, we have academic in person, things that are happening. We have supervisory paras in the library for a structured environment. We have students with IEPs and 504s getting support. We have four days a week instruction for students that need help. We've identified students on an individual basis who may be struggling with mental health or academic health or academic needs. We have after-school supports for students. We have Saturday morning where we're bringing in students. On Superintendent's Conference Day, we opened up our building at Sutherland and Mendon. We brought kids in for extra help during the school day for APs. We have our music students coming into the building after school for their spring curriculum concerts. We have different, different things happening. We have a great stuff happening for the community. June fifth, we're planning a great celebration for our seniors in a parade. It will start at 10:30 in the morning. We'll go, start at Nazareth and a straight shot down Main Street. We're also planning for our seniors, everything that they would normally do, awards night, senior balls, graduation. What we're trying to work through now, and I believe this is coming, is that we may be able to have a senior ball without having to jump through a lot of the hoops with regards to testing. to testing our students or showing vaccines, because the outdoor events, I think, are going to increase to 500. For graduation, we're still working on some details. But we're looking at Mendon having it on their turf field, Sutherland having it on their field with four guests each. So if you think about that being five per family, we're looking at about 1,200 students, 1,200 per event. So 2,400 people in our facilities for graduation. And we're still working through some of that guidance, and I will share that that will more than likely change as well. So beyond the school year, beyond right now, and so starting last summer, our focus wasn't on what are we doing in September. Our focus has always been, what are we doing two months from now, three months from now, four months from now? So that continues. We have about seven weeks before graduation. So our focus now is not only should things change, how can we get people in, but then what are the things that we should be doing right now for next year? And as we look at the tea leaves, what's in the guidance that we can start planning for, if the guidance doesn't change, for us to make sure that we can open fully for next year? So for example, the guidance talks about cohorts right now. So if that's the case, if that's not changing, then we'll schedule students where cohorts make sense. We'll get them all in. I don't see how we're not fully reopened next year. You heard it in our budget discussion. It's in all of our planning meetings. We're reopening next year. Our kids are not going to be hybrid. We're working right now on summer programs. So as early as this morning, as late as this morning, we talked about what that's going to look like for helping our students, especially our secondary students, with any kind of learning loss that happened this year, how we can create a camp-like experience, if you will, at no cost for anyone, to bring them in, to support our students with both social, emotional, and academic learning loss, which also would, part of it be use of our federal funds. And then how do we bring kids back? What are our summer orientations need to look like? We need to do things differently. So with that, I know that there's angst, I know that there's frustration. I know that people are, their tanks are empty. Mine is there with you. I think everyone's there. This has gone on too long. So as we look towards this year, we're looking at how we can keep an eye on that red zone that I talked about, how we can increase opportunities for students, whichever way we go, how we can end the year strong, and how we can plan for next year to be fully reopened. So with that, I offer any questions to the board.
Thanks for sharing all that, Mike.
Yeah, thank you.
May I have an approval of the consent agenda, please? Pete? Irene? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Old business? New business? Okay, public comment. We did revise our public comment. As Mike was saying, we've been trying to test new ways of conducting our public comment, trying to encourage people to attend the meetings in a safe manner and follow the protocols in place. We do want to be transparent, we want to hear from our constituents. With that, I'll just read the new protocols, redesigned protocols. The Pittsburgh Board of Education values transparency and the public comments made during its meetings. As such, the Pittsburgh Board of Education actively provides for this agenda item at its regular meetings. Board of Education meetings are not public forums, rather, they are business meetings held in public where dialogue is not normally conducted with audience members. The purpose of this agenda item is for the Board of Education to receive respectful and constructive feedback, opinions, and information. These comments are then taken under advisement by the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools. Respect and civility are required during these meetings, particularly as we have students routinely attending as part of their coursework. Comments should be in reference to an interest or topic and not an individual. Each speaker will have the floor for no more than three minutes. The Board President reserves the right to limit the total amount of speaking time. In an effort to avoid repetitiveness, we do ask that if speakers are attending with other residents with similar input, we ask that the group designate one person to address the board. For speakers who do not follow the meeting and decorum protocols, the speaker's privilege of the floor will no longer be recognized by the Board of Education. Those planning to address the board during public comment must share the nature of their topic, name and address with the board clerk before speaking. Note cards are available for this purpose for those that are in-person this evening at the sign-in table near the entrance of the meeting room. With that said, I do have, I have five cards with me. Do we have any more cards from audience members?
I'm writing and thinking.
Okay, okay.
I think the worst.
We'll save you for the last. Okay, so I will start with Laura Jean Dykman. Welcome, Laura Jean.
Thanks.
That microphone's all set up for you, right there. Sorry, sorry to confuse you.
All right. I'm Laura Jean Dykman at 19 Ripngale Road. I want to start by thanking you for in-person. Whoop, whoop. Last time I couldn't come because I was in America, AKA Florida. So, but now I'm here, so thank you. So there are so many issues that I feel need to be discussed at the board meeting, but most of you know that when personal freedom regarding parental rights comes into, that's when I get up and talk. So that's what I'm talking about tonight. I'm going to be focusing on masking, because that's what... So there's lots of rumors that are circulating regarding the continued mandatory masking next school year, and I kind of can't believe we're here 14 months later. I'm also very concerned with the school district's need to continue outdoor masking on school property, for example, but not limited to sporting events. I would like to make everyone aware that the New York State Department of Health was foiled on December 15th, 2020. It was a request for all records that A) included the efficacy of wearing face coverings by the general public as a method of stopping the spread of infectious diseases such as influenza or COVID-19. B) any safety risks associated with wearing masks or face coverings by asymptomatic or healthy people. The response was, quote, "After a diligent search, no records responsive to your request have been found." I'll let that settle for a second. Additionally, I would like to make everyone aware of the actual executive order that began all of the masking policies, and I will clarify what it actually is, so you don't have to, you don't have to wear a mask if you don't want to. Executive Order 20217 was signed by Andrew Cuomo on April 17th, 2020. It states that any individual, and this is quote, "Any individual over two and able to medically tolerate a face covering shall be required to cover their nose and mouth with a mask or cloth, face covering when in public places, and unable to maintain or when not maintaining social distance." New York Public Health Law 66-3.2, effective 2/25/21, states that face coverings/masks are only required in public places where one cannot social distance. In regards to outdoor masking, New York Department of Health on 3/25/21 and the New York State Athletic Association on 3/26/21, both say no masks required outdoors unless you cannot social distanced. I am very concerned that the prolonged use of masking for extended periods of time on our children, it's a detriment to their physical, mental, and psychological well-being. I would encourage you to advocate for unmasking the children, as the science has proven in many other states, like I keep sending you all those pictures of all the other states, that nobody's masking at their outdoor events, and schools are starting to unmask in many other states. There is no correlation between the use of masking and the efficacy of stopping the spread of COVID-19. Masking should be a choice. I am additionally gravely concerned, I'm almost done, over the need to provide a negative COVID test or a vaccine proof to attend prom and graduation. They are outdoor events. What is happening is coercion by our county. Why is Mendoza, who by the way is profiting on his recommendations, running our school district? I am troubled over how we've gotten to a place that we are guilty of being sick until proven healthy. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura Jean.
Thank you.
Next, I have Vicki Vedder.
Good evening. My name's Vicki Vedder, 24 McCord Woods Drive. I think you all know me by now. Back from the great state of Florida, where children or families have had the choice to send their kids to school five days a week since last September. Or if, for medical reasons, they wanted to stay home, they had that choice too. My topic tonight is on the budget. And I've addressed this before. So I've done my homework. First, I want to thank Mr. Kenny. I know he's, he does a lot of work, and the district's lucky to have him. So in reviewing the financial statements from the last fiscal year, after we had passed the budget for this year, not knowing what to expect, the school being closed down for three months, not providing services, just in summary for the community who doesn't read budgets or look at the fine print, the district last year had a surplus of $4.8 million. Revenues increases, expenses decreased. That sum of $4.8 million was put into the, I guess later subsequently, was decided to put in the capital reserve fund. The total general fund balance, it's June 30th, was $57.6 million. Total capital reserve funds is $23.9 million. All of that adds up to a lot of money. In the capital reserves, there's those three pieces, $4.9 million in technology, $16.6 for building, and busing is just under $5 million. So at a prior board meeting, I made an appeal, maybe last month or the month before, on putting together the budget for this coming year, that we at least consider putting forth a budget that is flat. The taxpayers in the town of Pittsburgh made the same appeal to their board. Given the state of the economy, the fact that families are, you know, having to stay home and educate their kids, or maybe put them in private school or homeschool, family finances are probably modified, given the current economic climate. This year, we have not provided 100% of the services that we would normally provide under normal years. So we don't know yet what the P and L is going to look like for this year, but I would guess, based on last year, we're probably going to have another surplus. But that remains to be seen.
Okay, Vicki, you need to wrap up.
Okay. So this year, as was noted, you put forth a $144 million budget, which is a 2.6 year-over-year increase. By the way, that equals to per pupil cost of $25,000 per student. And as it was mentioned, we're anticipating another windfall of $2 million foundation aid from New York State and $6 million from the Fed, although I know that's your mark for something else. So in light of all of that, I would ask you to take the taxpayers and the families into consideration when you just put forth this budget and keep it, keep it flat, retool the numbers, rework the numbers, take money out of the reserve. However you do it, find a way to adjust the budget. And if you, if you're...
Vicki, you've run out of time.
I will be voting no, and I invite other parents in the community to vote no as well.
Thank you, Vicki.
I just want to make one last point. Your proposition on the technology, $875,000 to build a tech fleet of one-to-one mobile technology, I think, Mike, that's what you called it. If you're planning on being in school, if you're committing to being in school five days a week next year, why do all these kids need all of this technology?
Thank you, Vicki.
And spend another million dollars of the taxpayers' money?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to comment a little bit. The first thing I would want to address is, as far as the pandemic and the financial concerns, that's why we spent an additional $1.6 million on staffing, so that we can have elementary students in school five days a week. So parents did not have to choose between working or staying home with their students. We made every effort possible to look at this pandemic and see how we could get as many kids in school as possible, with a focus on the youngest children, in part because of the economy, in part so parents can stay working. The technology and everything else that was shared there, and Vicki makes logical points. If we were to reduce the tax rate, for example, or the levy this year, which, by the way, we're already putting a couple million dollars from reserves against the budget, that means that when we have capital projects to do, then we would have to ask the taxpayers to burden that load. And part of it is because we do not get reimbursed at a very high level at all from the state. So if we are able to save money in the capital project, and we need to replace, so for example, we know that we need, when we reopen next year, we need generators in our schools. So right now, every time the wind blows, Thornell Road goes out. And now we're forced with an emergency situation, same with Transportation Department, same with a couple other schools. We want to look at areas for efficiency in our district and safety in our district, and we have to look at our roofs and our boilers. That's why we have reserves, so that we can take money out of those reserves now, instead of having to ask the taxpayers, in addition to your taxes, to pay for additional capital work. So I think at face value, I get, I absolutely get, and I appreciate what Vicki's saying, but I think you have to look at this from a lot of different lenses, and also know that we are audited nonstop, and we're, we just are about to finish the comptroller's audit. My sense is you're going to, the community's going to be very proud of how we're using our money. So what Vicki's opinion was, was a good one. I'm just trying to share with the community why we're doing what we're doing. It makes sense for our longevity.
Okay, the next person is Cheryl Georgia.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Georgia. I live at 70 Woodland Road in Pittsburgh. I'm a teacher and a parent. Just want to make one correction, it is not a pandemic anymore, it is an endemic. However, I'm here to talk about Pittsburgh being, and always has been, a leader in the school districts in New York State. It's a fact. There is no excuse for Pittsburgh and all of its resources to not have kids doing what Penfield and Spencerport and other districts are doing, at a bare minimum of opening up the middle schools, six through eight grades, five days in person. We need to continue to lead. Leaders have to make difficult decisions and sometimes go against those who are above or in power. Dr. Mendoza is not following data. We all can see the data and research. We know in-person school is best place for kids and staff, five days a week in person. It has been proven that it's very safe, and actually a protective layer for those teachers. I'm hoping that Pittsburgh residents vote for candidates who support opening schools fully. I'm not sure why you aren't. why you aren't opening schools fully, and I would like to know the answer to that. And I don't really want to know it's because from Dr. Mendoza or the Department of Health or any of that, because we're doing it in Penfield and we're a bigger school district than you in one building. So please answer that question, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that was actually covered during the superintendent's report, I believe. But I would also just, I would have to say again, as far as leading, having K-5 open in September is something that not many districts can hang their hats on. And I just have to thank everyone involved to getting our youngest learners in school. I will also agree with you that the best place for students is in school full-time. 100% agree with you.
I think everyone around the table agrees with that. Okay, Clayton, you're next.
Thank you. I timed it out to about three minutes and 10 seconds, so bear with me here when I get it started. The first thing I wanted to say, and this is a quick aside, you want, you want, what was the word, collaboration? Okay, I'm a very highly-trained physician. Go look at that map of New York State that you put up there. There's two counties that are outliers. Those two counties that are outliers are Monroe County and Erie County. The two most avid, non-opening Department of Health commissioners are Gail Burstein in Erie County and Mike Mendoza in Monroe County. Guess who controls the numbers, the positivity numbers in their counties? In Erie County, it's Gail Burstein, and in Monroe County, it's Mike Mendoza. So if you trust those numbers, I got a bridge to sell you that goes from Manhattan to Brooklyn. Just keep that in mind. You're getting played, people. You're getting played. Okay? I'm going to go back to my full-time thing now. Excuse me. At the last board meeting, and again today, Mike, you said that you are operating with the full expectation that schools are going to be fully open in the fall. Remember, there's hundreds of schools in New York State that are fully open right now. There's schools in Suffolk County, bigger than this, that are, that have been fully open since the fall. Liverpool's open now. They don't have Mike Mendoza to deal with, but they're fully open. Just outside the county, Brockport's open, Wayne's open. So I, you're, we're talking about September now, and these places have been open for months. So I'm asking you right now, will you promise us, not say, geez, I hope so, we all hope so, will you promise us that you will have every student in school five days a week come September 6th, or whatever that first day is? Will you give us your word as parents, students, and so on, that you will do that, or you'll resign and let, find someone who does, someone who can? Because there's hundreds of superintendents who've succeeded. So, you know, this is 18 months, ladies and gentlemen, 18 months. Are you willing to put your name on the line and say, I promise you, every student will be in school September 5th, or whatever it is? Yes or no, please?
I would say that I will promise the community that everything in our power...
Okay, I'm going to take that as a no, because I only got three minutes and I'm on the clock. So you're not going to give us your word, you will do it, or you'll split?
That's, that's...
No, that's...
Clayton.
I get a chance to talk.
No, so do I. So do I. Hold on. We'll stop the clock for you. We'll stop the clock. Can we stop it? It's not, it's not a fair question. And you know it's not a fair question.
It's a fair question. There's thousands of school districts that are fully open.
I get it.
So we can hire somebody else who can do the job. You're not doing the job, my friend. You're not getting the job done. You're just not.
Clayton, first of all, let's not direct it at individuals. That's part of the protocol of this meeting.
Okay, then none of you are getting the job done.
Okay.
Okay? None of you are getting the job done.
Clayton, please.
There are suicidal children in this district. They need to go back to school, and you are not getting the job done. If you can't do the job, God bless you. I know you're trying. Let's get somebody who can. There's thousands of, of superintendents in this country that have gotten the kids back in school. It's not impossible. It's hard, and Mike Mendoza makes it really hard, but it's possible. You will not even, you won't even tell us a year after any number of other people have done it, that you're not going to promise that you're going to do it. We need someone else if you won't do that. That's just the way it is. You make a quarter of a million dollars a year. A quarter of a, you make more money than Cuomo. Cuomo's the highest-paid governor in the United States, $225,000. You make more than any governor.
Clayton, I will ask you again, please.
Okay, so let's, 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 just let that sink in. Okay? No school, no taxes.
Vicki, this is a business meeting held in public.
This is business. We have no other way to get our point across to you, people. No school, no taxes. No school, no taxes. Even Penfield's got the, the middle schoolers back. And you've got cohorts, and you've got this, and you've got that. They figured out a way. You can't figure out a way. You're not getting the job done. I'm sure you're a great guy, but you're not getting the job done, and you're getting paid a quarter million dollars a year.
Clayton, do you have anything else to say? You keep repeating yourself. I'd like to hear something new in your statement.
Okay, here's my state, here's my finishing my statement. Look at this, folks. This is an expensive thing. This went out to practically everybody in Pittsburgh, okay? Glossy, two-sided thing. Vote yes on the 18th, and vote for these three people, okay? One of them's an incumbent, the other two, I believe, are sitting in here somewhere. Nothing, not one word in it. Not one word. I'll finish. Not one word in it says anything about full school reopening. Not a word. And you know who it's, who it's sanctioned by? You know who's probably paying for it? New York State Union of Teachers.
Okay, Clayton, your time is up now.
Okay, Google alert. There's no intention here to get these schools open. Okay?
Thank you, Clayton.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Okay, next is Nicole.
I just, I'm sorry. Just, just quickly.
Okay.
There's a lot to be said, I think, about having our youngest learners in school since September. There's a lot to be said for that. And I, and, and so half of our students have been in school since September. I don't think that could be lost. I get the frustration that's coming out. I, I do. I get the frustration from the pandemic. I get the frustration that's, that's weighing on people. And I get the fact that, how are you not open? We are at a point now where we, we can choose, we can choose tomorrow to not follow the law and reopen. And then at what point, I see the clapping, but then at what point do we pick and choose the laws we want to follow and the rules we want to follow? That, that's where we get stuck. So what we're doing, we're doing with fidelity. And we're trying to do it in a way where we can bring back people. When, when I hear, make me a promise that we're going to reopen next year, I don't see a situation where we won't reopen. But I also can't predict what's going to happen beyond COVID. I mean, that's a setup question. So I don't see how we're not reopening fully next year. I really don't. That's going to be our collective commitment. So I hope people know that. I hope people hear that. I don't see a scenario where we're, we're not.
Thanks, Mike. Nicole.
My name's Nicole Sidhu. I'm at 39 McCord Woods Drive. I'm here to ask the district, when will it advocate forcefully and publicly to return our children to school? Superintendent Perro implied that other districts have different circumstances from our own district? That's not accurate. Suburban districts downstate opened weeks ago. At that time, they had high case numbers. They had high infection rates. And anyone who wishes can go onto the Open Schools Monroe County Facebook page, or the Nicole Sidhu for Pittsburgh BOE Facebook page, and check the statistics right there, because you can scroll down and find them right there, okay? High case rates, high infection rates. The difference is not circumstance. By the way, these are suburban districts, very similar to ours, okay? The difference is not cases or spaces. It's advocacy. Simple as that, advocacy. The Erie County red zone that the superintendent pointed out on the map, what, one thing we need to know about that is that New York State Supreme Court Justice Emilio Callejovol, last week ordered districts in Orchard Park and Williamsville to offer in-person, full-time instruction for middle and high school students. He ordered them back by May 17th. Starting May 17th, where he expected that they would be at 100 cases per 100,000 population or below. He saw that the cases were falling, as they are now in Monroe County. Our, our cases are also falling in Monroe County. So why not announce? Why can't the district announce a return? As the justice ordered for those two districts in Erie County near Buffalo, with very high case rates, similar to our own, high infection rates, similar to our own. I assume that this judge, since he is a New York State Supreme Court Justice, knows the law, so I don't think that he would recommend these districts violate the law. He said, and I want to quote him, "Healthy children, unlike adults, cannot sit at home captivated by silence or screens. Their mental and physical well-being requires more. When that is endangered, courts must do all they can to protect them." Why is our district not doing the same? These are our children. I spoke to a local pediatrician last week who said he had become a psychiatrist because all of his patients had mental health issues. These were literally his words. Our children are suffering. 67% of schools nationwide are back in full-time, K to 12. 76% of districts in New York State are back, full-time, K to 12. Why not ours? I don't think you've fully answered that question. Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole.
If I could just answer the question about announcing a return. So the, we've watched this happen this year, where school districts have announced start dates, and students got excited, families got excited, and then the date came and went, and they weren't able to reopen. The, the judge's verdict is, I know Rita, is ordered, "So long as community transmission rates are at or closely near 100 per 100,000, Williamsville and Orchard Park School District shall return full-time instruction." That's New York State Department of Health guidance. That's what we're waiting for, too. And so what he's ordering is for schools to come back in school when, when the rates are at 100, which is what, what we're doing, too. I can't announce a date when that's going to happen. I wish it was right now. It'd be the easiest thing in the world to do, but we're not, we're not there.
Mike, why can't you speak up publicly? Why can't you go to the press and say, this doesn't work? Why can't you speak?
Clayton, Clayton, you're out of order. You had privilege of the floor. We gave you more than the time allotted. Anyone else have another question?
Should I bring up something to tell you who I am, or is it okay?
No, you can, no, you can come to the microphone.
All right. My name's Dave Munch. I live at 35 Deer Creek. This district is phenomenal. But why can we not figure it out? I guess it's, we talk about promises to our children, promises to stakeholders, that's like a real fun term, is stakeholders. I'm a stakeholder. I've had children come through this entire district, straight A's. So it's fantastic. But we make promises to follow the science, follow the data, follow everything according to that protocol. But yet, here we sit, as one of the wealthiest districts in the state, one of the best school systems in the country, in the country. But yet, my senior sits at home, getting straight A's somehow, and he is miserable. Why? Figure it out. He said it. Go get in front of a camera. Go to the governor. Stop with not getting it done. If that is the goal, prove it. If that's the goal, prove it. Right now, you're just getting beat down by Mendoza's protocols, guidance. If we call it guidance and we don't do what we need to do, then it's not guidance, it's the rules. And Mike, you had made a, a comment at the last meeting that the guidance wasn't guidance, and that if you dared go against the guidance of the state, that you risked losing funding. We are $75 million upside down from the state. I think that was the figure you declared, that they hadn't paid, that was owed to Pittsburgh. Well, that number, how much worse can it get if you, if we, I should say we, I don't want to point it at you, you're the head? If we know that we can open, share the data, share the numbers, share the facts, and use that data to say, we are opening, and then just do it. And I know there's fear involved with repercussions from the state, and it is financial, but we really, really need to get it open. And I know that this year is a bust, that from the last meeting, I understand that schools, for the older kids, for high school, it ain't happening. And I can't tell you how my heart aches.
Thank you, Dave.
Hey, Dave. Thank you for that. My, my emotions are with you. My son's a senior too. I've watched the same things you're watching and seeing. I, I get it about following the science, following all of, all those other things. We don't care about money that's lost if we, if we open or, or don't open. It's, it's, it's beyond money. All of our, much of our time weekly is spent on our seniors right now. And, and I know that it's, it's, it's not going to be the be-all and end-all, but we are doing as much as we can to give the seniors their milestones. Your heart aches, my heart aches. I'm, I'm dealing with the same thing. I appreciate, I appreciate everyone's opinions tonight. I really do. I especially appreciate yours. It, it does hit home. So I want to thank people that came in and expressed their opinions. It doesn't fall on deaf ears.
Are you going to, are you doing anything differently?
So I just don't...
We can't, we can't, again, we don't do that, Clayton. That's outside of the protocol of a business meeting. But what we can say is that as a board and everyone that you've heard from this, this evening, and Mike, you talk about advocacy. We are advocating. We've been advocating for the past year.
Publicly.
We are.
Publicly.
We are publicly advocating.
You are not. You've gone to the press.
Okay. We're not, we're not dialoguing, Clayton. We're not dialoguing. So, I'm sorry. Does someone have a card? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, that's okay. You can, you can hand, hand it to Robin, and then you can use the microphone.
So I wasn't planning on speaking, that's why I didn't hand something in before. My name's Suzanne Kumar. I'm a newer resident of Pittsburgh, 2749 Clover. So I just wanted to share a little bit that, I think I'm too close to that, about my experience in this last year, which is I've chosen a homeschool. And so I kind of got a little bit more of a sense of what's going on in that community. My husband's an educator, and we purposely chose this district after a long... My husband's an educator, and we purposely chose this district, after a long time searching, to move to, because he was very adamant about having this school district. But I have a five and a seven-year-old, and I just, I could not send them to school with everything that's going on. I just, in my gut, feel that it's very detrimental to little ones. And so every time you're saying that, you know, all of, they're all, we've got them all back in school, I, I can't do it. I just, I feel that there's just going to be too much, there's a lot of unknown, you know, of what doing this to our littlest children, you know? I couldn't send my six-year-old going into first grade for the, you know, new building, not knowing anyone, having to sit apart from people, wearing masks all day. I just felt that would be very detrimental. And from what I hear in the community of homeschooling, it's only growing. You know, in the groups that I belong in, every day or two, I see, I can't do this anymore, and pulling my kids, I'm pulling my kids to homeschool, I can't do this anymore. So I just want to share that. I, I, I couldn't send my ki, I won't, I guess in the future. If all of these protocols continue, I can't see that I would send them. That's, that's all I just wanted to share, I guess, that perspective.
Thank you, Suzanne. Thank you for your feedback.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else? No? With that, may I have a motion to adjourn? Thanks, Ted and Irene, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you to those who did come this evening, we appreciate you being here.